Board of Education, Fort Stock and Penn School District, today is Thursday, June 30th, 2022, 6:00 PM. When the boardroom at 101 West Villanueva Stockton, Texas, calls this meeting to order, this time I'll ask Mr. Luminous to do the role call at Salmisher Forum.
Mr. Luminous, President.
Mr. Luminous, President.
Lo Garcia, here.
Eddie Martinez, here.
Andy Rivera.
President.
Andy Rivera.
Yeah.
Ursula Sanchez.
Here.
This meeting has been called and notice of this meeting has been posted in quarters with the Texas Open Meeting Act after 551 Texas Civil Code. This time I'll ask Mr. Garcia, ladies and gentlemen, to follow the education and support.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I am the representative of the United States of Texas, one state under God, one nation.
Thank you, gentlemen, for allowing us to gather this evening. We kindly ask and pray that you're fortunate to watch over the Fort Stockton community, the Fort Stockton ISD. That you grant us the wisdom to make the best decisions for our children, our community, and our staff, and that you can watch over all the people that are still bearing over the losses that every Sunday happen in the state. And Jesus, let me pray. This time we need more open forum and public comments. We have three people that have signed up. We have Mr. George Hanser and Mr. Tom Ezeo to go about landing and property. And then we have Chief Luhan to address the SRO issue. So at this time, I'm going to land Mr. Hanser and Mr. Ezeo if they are going to address the board individually or together.
I think you'd give me his minutes.
Pardon?
I think you would, Mr. Ezeo, would give you his minutes.
Well, I'm asking him, what time, what do you want to do?
I'll give him a minute.
You give him a minute? Okay, so that means you got 10 minutes. And before you start, let me read this. "The open forum part of the meeting is set aside for individuals to speak to the board about any matter of interest to them pertaining to the school program excluding personnel. To communicate comments to the board, you must complete and submit this form. All fields are required. Incomplete forms or forms containing erroneous information will be disregarded. For special board meetings, public comment is limited to topics listed on the agenda." During the open forum, the board president will call for public comments. Individuals will be contacted at the phone number provided in the order of registration and will be asked to state their name and topic of the comments. Comments may not be included per meeting. Also, in the interest of meeting management necessary for effective meeting management per to accommodate large numbers of individuals wishing to address the board, the presiding officer may make adjustments to public comment procedures, including adjusting when public comments will occur during the meeting, reordering different items referring public comments on non-agenda items than genuine agenda items to a later meeting, providing expanded opportunity for public comment. Or establishing an overall time limit for public comment and adjusting the time allotted to each speaker. Also, complaints and discussion about a particular employer program prohibited by law, the board has adopted specific complaint policy and specific procedure for rescinding those complaints. Those policies require a written complaint, administrative conferences, and a request that the item be placed on the agenda of a board meeting. The board may furnish specific factual information or recite system policy in response to comments, but shall not deliberate or make a decision regarding any subject that is not included on the agenda. For more information about public comments, see the Fort Stockton Board Policy BEP. At this time, I'm going to include the portion that addresses disruptions. And the board shall not tolerate disruption of the meeting by members of the audience if after at least one warning from the presiding officer, any individual who disrupts a meeting by his or her words or actions, the presiding officer may request assistance from law enforcement officials to have the individual removed from the meeting. At this time, please consider, please advise that this is wanting number one. And at this time, we'll start with Mr. Hanser. You've got 10 minutes.
My name is George Hanser. I reside at Fort Stockton, Texas. I'd like to begin with going through public records. This is Ken Paxton, training members of governmental bodies in this open meetings record handbook. At core, the Texas Open Meeting Act simply requires government entities to be public as well as open to the public. Training, everyone of you guys get training on open meetings there. Requirement by law. You're talking about the procedures for holding closed meetings under this chapter. So you're all trained by closed meetings. You're also told about the consequences, the penalties and consequences. The definitions, governmental body means, school board district, board of trustees, where your governmental body, you are under open meeting act. Deliberations concerning real property. Quote, "A governmental body may conduct a closed meeting to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if," don't say you get to every time it says "if," in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of governmental body in negotiations with a third party. One of your members is not a third party. Section 551072 permits an executive session. Only where public discussion of a subject would have a detrimental effect on governmental body. Note that they're negotiating positions with respect to a third party. Again, not one of yourselves. If you're buying real estate or one of your board members, they're not allowed to be in there, period. It does not allow governmental body to cut a deal in private, avoid a public input and debate. Who may attend closed meetings, superintendent, school board members. A person, I quote, page 65 of the 2022 Open Meeting Handbook. A person who wishes to sell real estate to a governmental body may not attend an executive session. Pretty clear. Section 551144 provides as follows. If a closed meeting is not permitted, C, if you participate in a closed meeting, an offense under section A is a misdemeanor punishable by a fine not less than $100 or more, 500, confinement in county jail not less than one month or six months, or both. In 1998, Texas Court Criminal Appeals determined in Covar versus State that a government official who participates in an impermissible closed meeting may be found guilty of violating that act even though he didn't know the meeting was prohibited under the act. The reason for that is, that's right, you're supposed to know. An action by a governmental body in an illegal closed meeting is voidable. Section 551.141 provides that an action taken by a governmental body in violation of this chapter is voidable. You have the right to void a transaction that was illegally held in a closed meeting. Move on. Disclosures. This comes out of Texas Association of School Boards. I think that's where all y'all were this past week, their meetings. Chapter 553, disclosure of interest in real property to be acquired by public money. A school board member must make more than one disclosure for the same interest. This affidavit has to be filed at the county clerk's office prior to any discussion purchasing that property. Today, there is no such disclosure filed in public records of county clerk's office. I double-checked again today. There wasn't last week, there was the week before, there wasn't back in May when you started discussing this matter. It's required. The affidavit must be filed with the county clerk under section Government Code 553.002. Sample of it's found there also. Criminal offense. A board member or candidate commits class A misdemeanor if the individual has actual notice of the acquisition or intended acquisition of a property interest and does not file the affidavit. Don't say you got voted. We don't seem to understand that it doesn't matter whether you vote or not. You don't file it, it's a class A misdemeanor. Guess what? Two of them required. The other one's under chapter 171. You must also file it, Texas law requires it, on real property before a voter decision on any matter. Step two, the board member with substantial interest must also abstain from further participation. No participation. They suggest, this is the school board group, people that oversee what you're doing, would be wise to refrain from attending such deliberations. Chapter 171 criminal offense, school board member commits a class A misdemeanor if he files the affidavit or these abstention requirements. But you don't file an affidavit when you're trying to sell your property to the school board, you commit a crime. Board action may be warranted. Also talk about where they have to be disclosed. Website posting, Fort Stockton and Penn School District has a website, correct? Everybody knows that. A district that maintains their website shall provide access to all conflict of interest statements and questionnaires on that website. There's not one. Now, here's the fun part. This is your code. These are your policies. Fort Stockton ISD, 186902, BBFA legal. Ethics, conflict of interest disclosures. You basically mirror the law. In the case of a substantial interest in real property, that means you own it, or it's worth $2,500 or more, we're talking about transactions, four lots, $130,000, that's substantially more than $4,500. It is reasonably foreseeable. You know what that means? That you guys should be able to foresee what's going to happen. That an action on the matter will have a special economic effect on the value of the property. The affidavit must be filed with the official bookkeeper of the district. Texas law says it's going to be on the website also. Move forward, real property. Person has substantial interest in real property, $2,500 or more, talking 130. Violations. This is on page seven of your policy. The school policy, not mine. The school policy. A person commits an offense if the person violates Government Code 553.002. This one's filed over at the county courthouse. County clerk's office, it's not there. Challenge you go look. A person who violates Government Code 553.002 by not filing the required affidavit is presumed, now listen, presumed to have intent. School district requires intent, meaning you have the mindset to do something. That's what intent is. The intent to commit an offense. The intent, the mindset to commit a crime against the school district, against the public institution that has public funds. Page 24, 2021, those present, Andy Rivera. Closed executive session. In accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, you all know what it says, deliberate real property, 5512072826. The board reconvened. The board, doesn't say Mr. Rivera didn't attend. The board reconvened. Motion made by Anastasio, seconded by Flo, purchased four lots, South Middle School, for $132,000 for made in the investment. Andy abstained, following down the agenda. Motion made by Flo, seconded by Andy. He's there. Is in the meeting, you participated. An illegal meeting. That Texas Open Meetings Act says he may not participate in. You may not negotiate with him in a closed session. It has to be right here in front of all of us, and it cannot be prior to the filing of disclosures. One to county clerk's office and one right here. It's the law, guys. I'm reading straight out of all of those. June 21st, 6 o'clock. This is the one that's getting down to place here about who should have to be in there or not in the open meetings. In the open meetings, I listened to the recordings.
Your time's up, Mr. Hanser. Thank you for your time and your comments. This time, we asked Chief Luhan, the board, you've got five minutes.
Robert Luhan, Fort Stockton Police Department. Mr. Zamora, board. Thank you for allowing us to give this opportunity this time. One of the things that I didn't want to say, that felt in the assistance of you here to answer any questions that you all may have about one of the items on the agenda. We're prepared to wholeheartedly support and support the school district, the city, Fort Stockton, and Fort Stockton Police Department.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Moving on, staff reports. Dr. Canona, principal.
Principals are filling the campuses successfully. If any of you would like to floor, you are welcome at this point. If any of you would like to floor, um, you are welcome at this point.
I live down at the interview, we just finished summer school term, everything was well, we saw the progress of our kids, and we appreciate everyone, our teachers, faculty, probably not just summer school.
Thank you, sir.
Superintendent. So the main report that I have at this point has to do with the rec center and the course that we solicited, and the one that we received at this point that was fifth over the top compared to what the adjuster had previously given us. Mr. Madrid is still working, we can announce the different roofers so that we can look at that. In addition to that, I've contacted, made contact with the county judge and with Mr. Blatrigas from the city so that we can look at where we go from here, whether it's possibility of not just repairing that roof, but going into a renovation project or a cap. And at this point, it seems promising, we're going to propose it at our next rec board meeting.
This is ready. Yeah?
No.
Assistant Superintendent, I have to take directions.
All right.
In seeing the agenda, uh, the board has been furnished with background material on each item and for it has been discussed at a previous meeting. All items will be acted upon by one vote per category. Item may be withdrawn for individual consideration. The remaining item will be elected by one vote per category. Items withdrawn for separate discussion will be acted by, upon individuals. The minutes, approval of the minutes of special board meeting, June eighth, twenty-twenty-two. Need discussion on that? If not, go ahead, motion.
I move to approve the agenda, minutes, approval of minutes of special board meeting of June eighth, twenty-twenty-two.
We have a motion by Flo to approve the minutes of the special board meeting of June eighth, twenty-twenty-two, so I hear second. Second by Nacho. Need further discussion? Although your favor, raise your right hand. Andy, okay, so the vote is seven oh. Next, the special information, the school health advisory council, well, Mr. Madrid.
More, more, every year, Shaq, which is student, I'm sorry, school health advisory council, they meet and they just talk about things that deal with health. Uh, this year was a big year, uh, because we had the Department of Ag come in and do an audit in our cafeterias, which we passed with flying colors. Because that, that took up the majority of our time, making sure there is a triennial survey that has to be turned in to show that we are doing all the things, um, to be able to participate in the flu program with the national government and the state government as well. Uh, like I said, Paul's ladies and Paul's workers did a wonderful job. Maria did a wonderful job of submitting documents. We had to submit a lot of information with training and things that they have to do, so that did take up the majority of our time when we dealt with things. The other things that we talked about, uh, that we discussed was this improving on the things that we have in place, which is the emergency operation plans that are always, um, they're, they're considered live documents. We're always updating them, always looking to see what we can do to improve. There's some other things that, uh, were discussed, such as the air purifiers, which we did go ahead and buy some more with some money, grant money that we received from the state. And so we're able to do that as well. And then, there, there's some other things that we discussed, such as, uh, the de-chokers and the stuff as lead training that we went through, uh, in our schools, all our schools right now have the de-chokers, uh, AED machines and things like that. So just help kids, keep kids healthy and safe in our schools. There's other aspects to it, just like anything else we're talking about, uh, and that's like active shooter things and how we can keep safe. They, the, uh, health, uh, advisory council is leaning more towards how to keep kids involved, healthy, our summer camps help as well. The whole thing that we do just to keep kids busy and doing those things, so, uh, we need, we have a, we just put an agenda, uh, well, really, it's just all the bullet points that we discuss and we go over, you're more than welcome to have it, but it's a requirement to the state that we do that. And like I said, this year's biggest thing, if my ten minutes are up, please let me know. Well, like I said, the biggest thing was our triennial visit and survey that we submitted to the Department of Ag, which is extremely important because it impacts all our students, where we're able to feed all our students for free, regardless of their income, and we also feed students in the summer month of June all year long. So a lot of that is tied into community leadership. And so because of the things we do, uh, we're able to do that for our students here in this class. Not everybody is, but we are.
Moving on, this, are those air purifiers, did you see any data that's helped or are you doing this?
I will tell you right now, we, we did not see any linking, um, COVID-nineteen cases through school transmission. We do know that if there was a Houston era or get-together, that usually was a sign of where we had issues. And then sometimes it was, a lot of times, it may involve the sport kids who were going on travel teams, things like that. But we cannot, there was one instance early on, before the air purifiers, that we could link where somebody was having lunch with somebody and she didn't know she had it, but then she got it, and then two weeks later, she realized she had it. Uh, so we cannot link anything to that. All that, the other thing is that our custodians and things like that, they, they were cleaning all the time, bus drivers were, that we're still continuing to do that. The only other data I can tell you is that, um, we didn't have a lot of flu, like we usually normally do, just like we did with COVID-nineteen, but I mean, it isn't really a system, sick, but there are some things that, that, you know, you can see for the most part. There wasn't a, we didn't have to shut down a school. You know, so, uh, there were some schools that did get shut down early on in the year, we were in.
Thank you. Not, moving on, action items. Action item A, Midland College Member Random of Understanding Partnership Agreement, Dr. Samona. Thank you, President Spino. The Midland College Dual Credit Partnership Agreement and random, and we're excited because we have, uh, the automotive program and some of the other things that we want to move forward with, CTE. Forgive me, I returned very late on Friday from a two-week military training academy at, at Fort Bliss, and I just noticed that there is one here, discussion has taken place between Midland College, um, their team, career president, and ours. Everything is accurate with the exception of the English thirteen oh one, or two, in the attachment A portion. There's been a discussion between Midland College and us to revise this crosswalk. And I think that they failed to make this change. Other than that, though, everything is kosher, and this will keep us in relationship to Midland College and, and help us to expand our career technology and education programs as quickly as possible. We're still aiming for this coming year at the beginning. Mr. Alvarado, I haven't seen him walk in yet, he's traveling back from Midland today, conducting career technology training. Um, and he's really been a long, promising, we've even had some applicants already for, uh, some of those positions, cosmetology and. So, with the exception of the crosswalk, just that one portion of the English one, um, I recommend that the board approve this pending final resolution, uh, from Midland College and our district, uh, minor correction to the contract.
We are recommending, uh, that the board continue the partnerships with Midland College presented by Dr. Samona. Any questions, questions, maybe explain them through well?
This year, we are adding a public speaker to the software. Differentiation is key, sir. And, and so every student is, there's some that are way more advanced and some that are a little behind. And what we intend to do is provide services that will enable every student to accomplish to the highest of their expectations.
So we're gonna be, uh, first of all, maybe?
To some freshmen, it would be possible if, uh, they make it through an accelerated block in December, and they earn a position to score masters in the classes that they're taking at that point. If they were approved, that those that are most ambitious and capable might be able to start taking freshman classes today. As a matter of fact, I just had a conversation today with a university that would complement Midland College, and for those particular students that are completing their associate degree as they approach junior year, would be able to possibly earn a bachelor's or bachelor's degree during high school. It's not for everybody, but there are some.
Three more questions. Not, I hear motion. I move to approve the MOUs and partnership agreements with Midland College, along with the minor corrections to the needed portion.
We have a motion by Flo to approve the MOUs and partnership agreements with Midland College presented by Dr. Semitic. So tomorrow, with minor change, that's just saying, I hear, I hear second, one second, second by Nacho. We're going to discuss, although, favor, raise your right hand. Seven oh. Item on the agenda is Region eighteen shared service agreement, Dr. Samona.
Sir, we work with the service center to augment and provide support to many of the different programs that the district has to stay in compliance with. They also maintain a lot of the different software systems that we use for the student database, et cetera. As with most things in today's society, although we are staying with the same plan, the package that the district has been with, the amount that they are charging us has gone up a little bit, maybe a little lot. But at this point, all of these things are items that the cabinet and different leadership teachers in the district believe that we require to move forward and continue to provide the best services we can to our students. So unless there's any questions, this is an annual thing. My recommendation is that the board approve the shared services agreement with Region eighteen that's presented.
We are recommending to approve the services and fees interagency agreement with Region eighteen presented. Any questions?
What was the, on the increase, is there a lot of one?
What was the difference, Ms. Maria, when we looked at it, was it forty-ish?
Forty-seven is what I have.
Uh, so December is saying that some of the restaurants are upping the price of everything too, um, and because that's what they seem to do.
It's a normal thing throughout the year. Uh, it may not be as much, but I think we found a way, it's, I guess. Anybody else that provides those services?
There are individuals that are contractors and consultants, but typically, they cost more. Yeah, because this is a shared service agreement, there are twenty region service centers in the state of Texas. Ours is located in Midland, it's Region eighteen, and they consolidate the resources to provide with districts.
And that is TA, he's providing the information to the county. Any other questions? I mean, not, I hear motion, I mean, motion.
I'm moved to approve the services and fees and agreement with, uh, Region eighteen.
The motion by Nacho to approve the services and fees and agency agreement with Region eighteen, I hear second.
I second it.
Second by Maria. Although your favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries seven oh. Next item on the agenda. Tasby, Tasby, delegate and alternate, uh, for September twenty-four, twenty-twenty-two. Back to Samona.
So the Tasby Annual Convention is the largest administrator and school board convention in the state. It is set for September from the twenty-third to the twenty-fifth. Each district who is a member of Tasby gets the opportunity to select and have a representative be a delegate to our district in the delegate assembly. Um, we have to provide this information, um, so that they can send the required materials for the delegate to review prior to. We need to choose an alternate, so in the event something happens, between now and September, someone is ready to step up. So at this point, uh, I recommend that you ask of the board, who would like to be the delegate and alternate? And unless there's somebody opposing, maybe move forward with that.
Well, I've served as the delegate in the past, I don't mind doing it again. I think it's an important deal where it gives the board an opportunity to address issues that we're having to deal with, uh, with state legislatures that not having, and representatives. And it gives us an opportunity to have a voice. Now, we always get it our way, no, but at least we have an opportunity to express our concerns. So, uh, I think it's a good deal. I've been doing this, and, uh, at the Region eighteen, at the meetings where we have them either at Region eighteen or Saw Ross, uh, people are given an opportunity to, to, uh, come up with some representatives from their district, so. I'd like to see us continue doing that. But what is worth, now I'm not serving again, I still have to be with the alternate, there's somebody who wants to. And I will tell you one thing, we, we sit in there for about four hours, and we give one hour break. So, for what that's worth.
Is anybody else interested? Guys, so, so I want to make a motion.
I'm moved, uh, because I, uh, okay. I'm moved to approve Billy Spino as primary and Nacho as pastor of the Eagle. The meeting is as alternate delegates for the twenty-twenty-two Tasby delegate decision.
The motion by Flo to approve Billy as primary and Nacho as alternate delegate to the twenty-twenty-two Tasby delegate sim. I hear second. Second by Ushula. Although your favor, raise your right hand. Here, seven oh. Next item on the agenda, is Tasby Policy Update, one-nineteen, Dr. Samona.
Tasby, I believe at this point represents every school dis, every public school district in the state as far as the interpretation of laws that are passed by our legislature. And, uh, we finish and put those bills out, they go through and say, oh, we got to put this into the district's policy. And we have a legal policy, and then we have a local policy. The legal represents what we cannot bend one way or the other. It is what they've interpreted with their attorneys that we should follow. And local is where it comes to what we would like to kind of tailor make it to what we can best represent and serve our community and students. Um, this is predominantly consisting of legal updates. There are only a few local updates as you go through and see this, uh, policy update explanatory notes. Only a few local, um, updates. And Tasby does make recommendations as to what a good policy and standard policy would be. Having reviewed each of the one legal explanatory notes, I see nothing that stood out in particular to me that we need to address. In addition, we have a complete policy update review set for, uh, early October, Ms. Maria. And we scheduled that in August of last year. That's how long it's taken for, you know, for us to come up on this pipeline because of COVID. But before you know it, it'll be upon us, and we'll have a chance to review as a school board, every single one of our local policies. We make alterations to, you know, best represent our community then. Uh, because of that, unless there are any specific questions or things that pop out to you, my recommendation is, is that you update our policy with, uh, by approving Tasby Local Last Policy Update one.
Any questions, I mean, here, three, five? If not, I hear motion.
I'm moved to approve the Tasby Policy Update, one-nineteen.
We have a motion by Nacho to approve Tasby Policy Update, one-nineteen, that's presented, I hear, sir.
I'll say.
Andy. Although your favor, raise your right hand. Here, seven oh. Next item on the agenda. At the kind of local participation agreement, Dr. Samona.
Sir, Tasby, they've drilled this one. Just write to us, they sent it, and they said that we need to approve this, um, or we disagree with the drop our workers. Unemployment, no, our unemployment. And, uh, they allowed for us to hang with them last year, but they're saying that if we intend to continue with them for the upcoming year, we have to look at the fine print. We have looked at it, uh, Ms. Maria created a template for this one specifically, uh, and I, I see no issue with it, Tasby has sort of this role when it comes to most of those areas. Ms. Maria, is there anything you'd like to say specifically about this internal participation agreement?
No, sir.
So unless there's questions regarding this, this is, we either do it or we don't Tasby, you know, for unemployment. Uh, so sometimes they do that, like when they do the telephone update, you agree to this or not. Uh, my recommendation is that we approve the agreement.
We have a recommendation, Dr. Samora, to approve the Tasby internal participation agreement presented. Some other questions, comment? That's not, I hear motion.
To approve the Tasby internal participation agreement that's presented.
The motion by Flo to approve that being a local participation agreement presented, I hear second.
I'll say.
Second by Sandy. Although your favor, raise your right hand. Here, seven oh. Next item on the agenda is Innovative Forces for Cosmetology Careers, Dr. Samona. Dr. Mora.
President Spino, these innovative courses are right in line with CTE programs. If y'all remember, the last board meeting, we approved the innovative courses for the automotive program. Uh, Mrs. Horton has put together this list in conjunction with, uh, Mr. Alvarado. Um, so these are the courses. The actual packet that Ms. Maria has in the thick book, um, is a much more comprehensive than this because it gives the actual explanation of, uh, all of these courses, but you can see exactly what it is. It's a pathway towards pathology. Pretty good and dry. Mrs. Horton, is there something you would like to say about the innovative courses you were, you're recommending?
We could not have the program without them, so they're very important. And, uh, half the courses are already in the course catalog and this other half needs to be approved by the board.
Good enough. Well, they, uh, not that they pick these courses will be certified through us or will be able to take a test.
Same as before, right?
Yeah. You probably have a question.
Like on each or separately?
There, there'll be different certifications, like for barber, aesthetics, yeah. Yeah, stylus.
I'm happy that we're going to use.
And the equipment, the certain tools or supplies that going to be something to supply or?
You, uh, you, uh, you approved money last board meeting.
Yeah. And our, and our maintenance guys have already found the old pipelines that have been covered up and everything. So they're moving along and, and making progress with what we have.
So it'll be at the same location that, that they used to house.
Yes, sir.
And after tomorrow, will somebody come and inspect it and sure, um, everything is up there?
Yeah, and actually, prior, prior to, they came and worked in the shop, but obviously we needed to get to make it to where they could come and inspect it. Same thing for the automotive shop.
Any further comments? If not, I hear motion.
I would to approve the courses for pathology.
We have a motion by Lutto to approve the innovative courses for pathology percentage, I hear second.
I'll second it.
Second by Sandy. A little in favor, raise your right hand. Terry, seven oh. Next item on the agenda is Budget Amendments. Dr. Mora.
Sir, these are some of the budget amendments that Mrs. Maria is recommending. As you can see, it explains exactly which accounts they're requesting to move somewhere in front of the others. This is normal with the culture we get to the end of the school year. Uh, but if there's any specific questions to any of the budget amendments, I'm sure that I or Ms. Maria would be happy to help. And if not, I recommend approving the budget amendments as presented.
A recommendation to approve the budget amendments as presented. I have time to look at them. If you have any questions, by any of us, thanks. If not, I hear motion to approve the budget amendments as presented. We have a motion by Flo to approve the budget amendments as presented, I hear second.
Second.
Second by Fred. A little in favor, raise your right hand. Terry, seven oh. Next item on the agenda. The board policies, CKC and local guardian plan stage one proposed, proposed, Dr. Mora.
Okay, so what we have right here are the policies that we would have to alter if we were to move forward specifically with a guardian plan, which we began the exploratory portion the last time around. Uh, since that time, I have met with DPS, I have another meeting scheduled and, and, put in place the plan for what would take for our individuals to get certified. Mr. Madrid has already been in touch with a couple and I've been in touch with, um, a different individual swell that we can bring here to provide training to the individuals who believe that they can serve in this capacity and also to provide recommendations for a final plan. Key policies that we'll see here, and one of the things that when I spoke to Tasmby reps, is if we were to approve a, uh, guardian plan, would we allow for the employee to use their personal weapon? Or would the district prefer to say, we are going to assign a certain type of weapon that the district purchases? Um, in addition to that, very specific in the type of ammunition that can be used. In our meetings and discussions that we've had, we, we believe that the individuals would have to be approved on both sides, not just because you say, this is something I want to do. Is it automatic that you say, yes, this is, uh, you've granted this permission? It's going to have to be an evaluation that takes place between our campus leadership team, um, and whoever is on that campus and then determine whether or not they're capable of doing that, having brought in the experts to provide that training. Um, and, and beyond that, in our discussions, I'm sorry, you know, some of the things that we discussed because of the intricacies involved, you know, this, this sometimes almost turns into a closed session, but it's unnecessary at this point. Um, I think that where we stand, we believe that we want to recommend that we finalize a plan, but we are pending that last little bit of working once again with our local enforcement and then bringing in some of the pros to give us the pros and the cons after they evaluate and the training. And, and, uh, so right now, really what we're looking at is just, do we continue to move forward with, you know, we bringing in these experts to provide the training to the individuals who believe they may be suitable to fill these roles?
So we're at the point of, if what you were asking, one of those, we're going to make a decision that we're going to buy it or?
The, 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 the five, and see, rather than to say this, it was best or one, we still waiting on the expert, uh, but the final vote on a plan will take place in July. You know, at this point, we're saying, this is what we gathered, you know, we, we've learned this, uh, we've talked to different individuals, we weigh the pros and the cons. Uh, the last thing is, what have we learned something from this expert that flips what we believe? But, but other than that, the entire intent of what we've been put, of what we've been putting into place as far as the fencing, the, the, the safety film and all that, is to have it set by the time the next year starts for our kids. And that's the second week of audits. That's why the rush to say, okay, if we can get the experts here quickly, in July, we have a final plan in place and now we go to execute. And the same thing applies with our fencing and, and some of the bits that we're working at, obtain at this point. And I do have one company that has assured me that, uh, if they are selected, they can have the film off before the start of school. You know, we're waiting on a couple of others.
Let me ask you something as far, as far as the experts are concerned. I know that at one of our board meetings, we had Chief Tom, uh, had his consultant representative brother, and then we also had Mr. Soya. Are these people part of the, uh, folks that we are going to consider input with our plans?
I, I, they, they are already individuals, you know, that are included and can participate in the meetings. They're welcome to join the training whenever we bring the experts in, but we're, we're, we're referring to our individuals who have clearly spent the last few years primarily on guardian plans, you know, not, not to question any of our law enforcement officers' skills or techniques, but what we're saying is, these are people who have provided specific training to people in education and, you know, day after day are participating and working at campuses.
We're trying to get this a little bit forward. Or a bit forward.
Yes, sir.
We got a hard time. I don't know. What we're doing right now is just to prove it and keep moving on.
To keep doing it on and if we learn something that is just a door breaker, that we will revise and say, okay, this is the reason why we don't move forward, but as of this point, we're saying let's continue with the process.
So your recommendation to approve stage one proposal?
Yes, sir.
We have a, or do we have any other questions, by any of us?
Would it start to be the one to give the go-ahead or in this certain person has passed the training and so on? Because I know that we went to, uh, was it that training? They were like, you really have to be mentally, um, prepared for it? And I think they've had some that didn't, right, that didn't pass, like they weren't police, but just did not, didn't think they could really handle being.
They didn't meet the criteria.
The two plans that we looked at, they're, they're, were, uh, the marshal and the guardian. And the difference between them, with the guardian, we get to choose within our staff who's able to do that. And they get sent on to the, uh, the training, is that correct, Williams? And they, they get evaluated too, but we get to choose from within our staff who's ready to do that.
I still think it'd be a good idea to get a safety director in there.
That's a, that's a good too, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of companies doing so. So I think we need to do something. Yeah, bottom line, agree.
You have to have something in place, you know, just in case, you know, we, we have to have something. And that's where we have to fall back off, we fall back off. And of course, the local law enforcement, PDSO is a main focus as well. But we've had five SROs before, you know, a lot of five, and we've never been able to get all five. So I feel that this is a good idea to continue on and work along with the local law enforcement.
No, one of the things that they did talk about during that class was all these things that were put in place or prevention, prevention. And, but we need to widen our perimeter at this, that's what we would say, stop them before they come in. And I think this is another area that we can do. So that's good.
We have a recommendation to approve stage one proposal. We're, we're a motion.
I'm motion to approve guardian plan stage one proposal with refined, with refined version set for July.
The motion, I second it. Oh, approve the guardian plan stage one proposal with refined version set for July approved. I hear second.
Second.
Second by Nacho. A little in favor, raise your right hand. Terry, seven oh. Next item is the School Resource Officer Program for twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Dr. Mora.
Sir, I had conversations with both the city manager and with Chief Wuhan, and, uh, they are in a position that they can find a number of SROs that the district would like. And as you can see, you know, when we look at all aspects, consider all aspects of the G O P and upgrades of, uh, school security, then, uh, we should establish what we believe we have, uh, that is in the best interest of our students. But, uh, but with that, looking at the price of that and, and, and taking everything into account, how many SROs are enough? You know, that is the question. I know Chief Wuhan has said we need five, but we also have bus. And we also have the technology center and the special ed center. And we also have numerous bus routes that have fifty-five, seventy kids that travel every day. And we also have individuals that go outside during their, their, their playground time, right? Then they go outside, there's, there's a hundred and fifty kids, and the only thing that's in the way is, is, is a, a, a mesh fence. I think at that point, you know, we're up into twenty, twenty-five, so that we can properly say that we did what was due process. And, and I just say to ourselves, if that's the case, are we know, are, are we not at the point where we're policing the city at this point? You know, um, Chief Wuhan himself said that if he had an SRO at the intermediate, in their car, that they could reach any of the campuses in approximately one minute. I don't know the whole about the thing, and I, 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 I know people were quick to say, but that entire thing took forty-five minutes, an hour with the SROs there. And, and I, I listen constantly to things that are going to expand my, my mind when it comes to making things better for our kids. And to quote Tim Kennedy, when it comes to those SROs that were in that building, the best time to go active, to, to go after an active shooter is not. And the second best time is not. It doesn't matter if, if there's one, if I'm waiting for backup, you know, the issues that have happened, the discussions between the city and, and us over the performance of our SROs, I think have been hashed out. The city and the county both have law enforcement agencies. Sheriff's Department of the city, you know, police, we have DPS individuals, we have border patrols that are out and about, we're adding the guardian program, we're fortifying our windows. If, uh, I think we'd be in a much better position, you know, based on the plan that we have developed, you know, for the bond to actually go state-of-the-art with everything for our kids, you know, we're doing what we can, be mindful and, and just understand what it is that it's going to cost and what is enough, because sixty-five kids on a bus are a lot more pinned up than on a campus.
Can I say something that I, yeah? I mean, I always have to do something. I was at intermediate and nobody was there. I'm not going to tell what time I, I timed it from the intermediate to, to middle school. And then, and then the intermediate to high school, it doesn't take a minute, it takes more than a minute.
You don't have sirens on, did you?
Well, I mean, no, but I mean, I think when nobody was out there, so if nobody was out there, it took, I know how fast I was going, it was at least four, close to four minutes. Just not no one minute from intermediate to, if they're inside the buildings, by the time they run out, in the car, I was not, I was getting my car and I decided what I'm going to do, I'm going to try this. And I did. I'm not going to tell you what time it was, but it was closer to four minutes. And that's what the guy said too, that we went to the training, he says, it's taken about between four to six minutes, the time for a police officer to get there. He goes, that should be the time. He said he could get, okay, from three to five, but he's like four to six, or did he say three to five or four to six or something? But it was like, you know? And so.
What I have to say is, is we need to prepare so it doesn't happen. We don't want to have, yes, we want to prepare if it does happen, but we need to be prepared so it doesn't happen. We don't want to be in that moment where it's happening. So I, I think we just need to go out and figure out how we're going to do it to prevent it.
Has the sheriff's department operated any, there, I mean, to, use our services first?
So, you know, here's the thing, right? If, if somebody is saying, you're welcome to purchase from us anything you like, is it offering? Or, or, uh, the city itself, this is available, but no entity has stepped forward and saying, everybody says this is what we want, so do it.
It could be more as a community, we were, I understand it's five thousand per SRO, but how about we, the school finishes too, the city finishes too, the community.
King Street for the city and King Street for the county.
Well, I agree with you. Let me say this, in the past, I've been in, have, have resource officers at every campus. Uh, and, and I can attest to it by saying that we had meetings, uh, uh, I called for a meeting with Mr. Trainum, uh, Delray was there, the mayor was there, chief of police was there, uh, I don't remember who else was there, but I think that the principal party were there. And we discussed this and in the past, all, all my experience here, well, I've been on the board, we've been, uh, uh, willing to pay for the cost for all the resource officers, any resource officers that we have. Right now, my feeling on this is that this is a community responsibility. It's not just the school. Yes, the school is where they're going to be working. I do think the resource presence is, is good, but I do think that it needs to be funded, uh, through the city and the county. They need to do their fair share, not just support stock. You've got our Ann Sheffield, you've got Buena Vista. And I'm, and right now, I think that the mood with the community is that we need to provide security for our kids and our teachers. And that's where we are and that's where we need to be. And I don't want something to happen, but we need to be prepared. And so I think we need to put everybody accountable. And so I think we need to put everybody accountable, and let's work together and say, okay, how much? How, how much can the city have, what's gonna the county do? Uh, we all, it's, it's Fort Stockton. Period, county, county, Vegas county. We're all live, we all live here, we all got kids. And so, uh, I don't think, I, I'm willing to pay our fair share. I think they're good to have. But also, I think the understanding that they will be under our superintendent. And that, uh, I think that the, uh. Guardian program that we're trying to get into, I think it's a good program, I think it will reinforce what we can do. But that's, for what it's worth, that's how I see things. And, and.
But we can.
I disagree.
Okay, that's fine, I disagree. And this one will say, okay. Well, they had six. I understand. They had six. They had nineteen, and they're, they're gone. Always. We still didn't stop them. They have a guardian program. I agree, still. Right now, uh, I agree with everything what you said, I, but the point that I don't is that I'm not worried about the city. I'm not worried about the county, I'm worried about the school. I, we can pay for it, five, uh, I'm not correct, uh, please correct me. We've always budgeted for five.
Exactly.
We've only got three. Now, I know. Lizbetha said that we've had problems with our SROs, and we do. We do. But. But we're not there. This is not to bitch about, I'm not. If we can, we have the means to pay for five, pay for five. Negotiate the price, but I'm gonna tell you something. You keep on negotiating prices, you're gonna get what you take. And the other thing, this, this SRO thing that we've got. We need to sit down and really define their purpose. And one thing we learned in this class, an SRO is an officer. And their, their job is to protect our perimeter, not to go look for kids. I don't want him to be in Alamo Ranches looking for little Johnny. And something happens here, because if it took four minutes or something with that salary, my time on was gonna take for him to get to the school. And that, we, we need. Truancy officers, yeah.
No, I'm not talking about Truancy.
But this is what I'm talking about, man. I know, we've already put layers. City right now is saying that they can give us five, they give me four, I'm happy, they give me three, I'm happy. You know what I mean? Because we've got guardianship coming up, hopefully. We've got all these security measures we've got on the buildings and buying them. We've got cameras and all this other stuff.
Uh, gotta disagree there, man. I think we gotta have one in every school.
The school, we need to protect the kids. I don't care what the city's. I, I, when I'm out there, I'm a citizen, and someone breaking into my house, I want that cop there, but that's their job.
So that's not the worst thing, is it?
But I, I just don't, I, I, right now, what I'm hearing, you know, we wanted to reduce price, whatever.
No.
And we get, or. Guys, everybody has their own problems.
Nacho, that's what we're talking about.
And I'm just understood that.
Well, we're talking, as far as securing the building, there's no way to discuss about windows, doors, uh, kids coming in and out, uh. The, the key problems that we have here with features, you know, baggage, and all kinds of things. That's what we're talking about with the pros coming in and giving us that information or guiding us. And yes, it's gonna cost money, and we're the ones that are just gonna have to foot the bill. And a, as far as I'm concerned, because those, this, these are our buildings. So having said that, that's what I'm getting at, the parents need to understand that we're doing this. So what, what role does the city play in this as far as their police department? What about the county as well? And I realize that they're limited as well, but we're fixing to sink a lot of money in security for our buildings. And if we don't, then it's our fault.
Chief, how long does it take to, when an officer to be an SRO?
You gotta go through a police academy, uh, you gotta go through a police academy right now, a police academy here in Fort Stockton. It's a night school, so it's a little bit longer. Uh, one hopes on three.
I, I wanna ask right now, the last. Two months ago, or when this thing happened, we did talk about that you had enough applicants to, to find five.
Yes, sir.
But I'll still do dwindling your, your stuff at the city. So my question again, to bring in, today we budget for five, how fast can we get off the car?
Uh, within a month, sir.
We got a month. You got eight weeks to, those school starts?
Well, I'd still like to have a discussion with the city and the county.
I'm just, I'm just.
No, I understand, but, but I would still like to have a discussion with the city and the county as to what they would be able to do.
Yes, sir.
Just touching on the topic, uh, which, uh, there was something about SROs, they have to have. To be an SRO, you have to attend the required training that's put on during y'all's conference. It's also for SROs, they have to have that by TPO, by. I hear you're talking about guardian, guardianship, the guardian program is all probably learned at the program. Your training is concealed handgun, get it to the permit from the state, that's it, that's all you do. We have continuous training, we, we have federal statutes to back us up, we have state statutes to back us up. We'll be ignored. That's what we have is the liability of it, that's what's gonna cover us, that's what's gonna cover you when we're there. You guys take action, it's on y'all. There's no, there's no, the only thing that covers the guardian, if you go back and look up, is the mark. Is a attorney general opinion, that's it, that's all you have. Next attorney general could come in, you could walk. So that's something to think of us.
The one thing that I was, the number incorrect, it takes, I think sixteen hours, sixteen hours to get your license. But the one thing that they did mention in that classroom, the board can set a minimum for us.
Yes, sir. Exactly. What he said was the minimum, the attorney general opinion is exactly that. So that's all.
I just wanna make that clear, marshal program, of course, is a little.
Uh, so my marshal program does have the, the school district does have insurance, and this would be taken into account when we come to that reliability. And anybody who would participate in something like this, would have to make that judgment call for themselves, to whether they would like to take that risk or not. If some people will say yes, others will not, um. What's gonna happen to the officers? Over there?
And you all there?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, so I can't speak to them. As you know, in the military, there's, there's plans that happen, there's stuff that happens, I lost people, you lost people. And that's the real world, that's the world we live in today. But the aspect that live is, we have some highly qualified trained individuals. So providing the training, and we work with the school, I hear, uh, comments. Uh, I think you hit the base, uh, we should try to educate my SROs, our SROs, your SROs. To understand that they're there to provide security, staff, students, property, your property, city's property. That's what they're there, they're not there to do treacheries, they're not there, now, a teacher feels that she's gonna be threatened, and they need a SRO to accompany them. We're not there to get the student, make the student come to class, they're there to provide security for that teacher, which is what we do. Touching on one topic, uh, you know, going with the true self, we're not true self officers. They did away with true self officers, you guys can quote true self officers, we can't. We have real strict guidelines by people, that's what we have to follow. I don't think, every, all the comments I hear, I don't think, throughout the year, I've had this, I've been the assistant chief for two and a half years. For two and a half years, I get the call constantly, well, I, SRO do this, we can't do that, sir, we can't do that. Why? We have statutes that cover it. We can't take any type of thing, you know, action on that, we can't.
Where are the calls from?
The calls are from educators, I've spoken, uh, Mr. Madrid had asked some of our SROs to do some stuff. He can tell you, I've told him, hey, we're not gonna do that, statute, we can't.
So. And when, when we had the meeting, and, and everybody said the issues that they had with the SROs. The issues were the SROs disappearing, the issues were them, you know, going in between campuses and choosing to say, this is when I go.
Let me touch base with that. Mr. Madrid sometimes will have an SRO look from one school to another school. You guys are forgetting that, sometimes they're tasked to be at a certain place, so they want them there for lunch. They get moved around, that's just the way it is, but at the same time, they're still providing security.
Okay, but what we were told, and, and one of our trainees was that if we assign an SRO to that school, they are to stay at that school. They are to eat at that school. And, but I think, I think the chief of police had said that if they needed our SROs, then they would have to go and help y'all. That shouldn't be the case, if not, I mean, no, no, you said that, you said that the other day.
Yes, ma'am, we're down, employees.
No, you said that last month.
Okay, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, we're not there anymore. Those, those are the discussions that the city manager and I have had about naming down what we need the SRO to do. And we've, we've said, the SRO needs to be in the car somewhere around that campus or at the front. Not, I'm going to go have a breakfast with the rest of the crew.
Yes, sir, that was addressed, that was.
Yes, sir, that was addressed, it was addressed, right, right off the pick, though, that was addressed.
The bottom line, the bottom, the bottom line.
Pretend that I know.
The, the bottom line, here, uh, we can, I mean.
Billy.
Uh, bottom line, can we get an SRO officer to be at each campus, period, full time? And we don't have any of this discussion or concerns that they're gonna be called somewhere else or whatever. Their job responsibility is going to be that campus, that campus. And as long as we know, as long as we know that they're at that school, if they're not there, let us know.
So is there going like, is for me, if we could go that route, that you provide their traction of their vehicles and. I can find.
I think I've talked to you, chief, about, you know, there was a, we have an administration here that needs to be at those schools. And they said that every morning, that assigned officer would go there and have a meeting with her for him.
Yes.
And then they would have, cover the things that they need to collect day. And then at, um, every monthly meeting, at the board meetings, the chief would, would come in with, remember we talked about that, about all this?
They wanted you to do that, yeah. As long as we know about that, if we know that our SROs are not where they're supposed to be, just let us know, and we'll take care of it. I, I make you that promise. I make you that promise.
Well, I think. I don't know if you can hear me or not.
Yes, sir.
I had recommended that we delegate a safety director, so we don't have this back and forth communication, I mean. It's not his priority, even though it is everybody's priority for kids' safety, but it's not his job duty to take care of that, as it's not the superintendent's. That's why I recommended a safety director that would work for and through all these guys, day in and day out.
The SROs would, would report to the principals at the building, they, they're in the morning. That's who they're responsible to.
If that's.
You're talking about something else.
Yeah, I, I know, I know Andy's talking about something else, I, I know, maybe I'm starting to break in.
Y'all, y'all to have a back portion.
A central, central location with a, with a school director, something like that. Cameras or something like that, yeah.
But at this point, at this juncture right now, if we chose to go with five. We'd be excited.
Yes, sir, I'm gonna get you six. And we want to help, we want to be part of this. The guardian program's good, the school marshal program's good, in addition to the SROs. I think that provides a lot of security for our kids, and that's, that's why I'm here.
I think we really need good communication, so as in the past, it's not there, it hasn't been there. I mean, we're not, the teacher reported, say, oh, yeah, it's been good, it hasn't.
Yes, sir.
I mean, because I've been there at the school and, I mean, which upsets me, because I'm like, okay, where is my SRO and all this?
Well, uh, board member Nacho Dominguez over here said that he see one every day.
Well, I don't see one at the middle school, so I mean, what's the deal there? I mean, I'm not lying to you, because I go pick up my child every day, so, and I have made it known that there's no.
Well, it depends too, ma'am, I mean, you can ask Mr. Madrid if he has someone at the Apache School.
Well, we had, we, we, there were two or three people, two or three were at the Apache School, so what's?
Well, that's what I'm saying.
No, but I mean, all three, all three SROs over there at the Apache School.
No, ma'am, that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, if they were there for a program that was required, whether for football games, whether for other events. Uh, look at that one video where your teacher gets knocked back, my SRO was there, stop that fight, that's what he's supposed to be.
There was a, there was a video of a fight that I saw, on video. What was your story at middle school?
We have shootings that happen in town, we're not, we have two people.
Okay, you just said it, you just said it, so what about our kids?
Oh, we get there, yes, ma'am, we get there, we investigate, we cover his pockets.
I mean, I think what's, what's, what's happening is that our main concern right now is the kids.
That's our concern, ma'am.
Okay, and it hasn't been that way, my opinion, I mean, this is my opinion. I want the kids to be in a safe place. When I drop my kid off, I want him to be in the safest place. Imagineable, and I, I see, I follow people, and I, I saw the three over there, that's why I read the comments.
Let me ask, let me ask you this. When I was in school, there was always a military standing outside in the hallway, always, so if the fight broke out, they broke out. You know, they were right there. Georgia, you know, so the, for Georgia. They can't be everywhere, that's like, our SROs can't be everywhere, your teachers can't, because sometimes they're on a staff, you know, so just go look with.
Billy. When I was an SRO in middle school, what we, the way we did it is I answered the messages, you know, I. First thing in the morning, after crosswalk view. You know, helping the kids get across, I went into her office, we had a meeting, we're our exam matters, and, uh. Got ready for the day, but I didn't leave yet, I stayed there all day, ate there. Towards the end of the, what's the end of the school day, we have another meeting. And discuss what happened through the day. And this, I was there for like six or seven years, it worked out really good.
How many were y'all?
I was the only one there.
I mean, were y'all holding y'all's SROs over?
Uh. We had, me at middle school, I had another one at high school, one in that. But I didn't leave, I mean, he, he had to stay up there on campus. I remember Billy being there, and, and I, and I think he did a good job, because there were a few mentions that I found out about or dealt with, and I was thinking, well, intermediate. And that, and that's exactly what I'm talking about, that, that's, that's what we, uh. We established that the SRO had reports to the principal. And like the chief is saying, if there's problems there, the principal can, can report to him directly, or the administration, whatever. But the bottom line is that I don't think that anybody doubts that an SRO officer is not going to be, uh. But be helpful in a situation, they're there, they can't be everywhere, we understand that. The thing that I like about it is that not only, we, in addition to the SRO officer being on campus. If we have the guardian program, and, and I know exactly what you're saying, because I can think of a few people that I wouldn't want a gun in their hands. But I, I think that our people here are, are smart enough to figure out, uh, how we can deal with that. And we got to do our act, it's kind of like Flo said, we have a responsibility to be our kids, our parents, but we're all, we're all in it together.
And I agree with that, sir.
We're gonna help those who reach, I can't, he's so hard, the guardian, SRO, he broadened that, he broadened that spectrum across that campus.
Now, we have to work together, I said.
So let's just move forward to that, everybody's trying, let's not throw bricks at everybody, let's see what we can do and work together.
This is a new year.
And, uh. The code of mine, I don't know.
No, no, you're, you're doing just fine, sir.
The other, the other thing. Why do we have to negotiate every year? Well, every year, uh, uh, what I'm suggesting is to increase it to three years or two years. That way we won't have, I mean, we know what we're buying for three years, instead of having to come up every year and, and, I, I agree with you, you know. Increase the, the, the agreement to three year or two years, or whatever we got, we choose.
I think that if the service becomes to the satisfaction of the district, we can consider that, but we're not at that point yet. So, but I will say, based on what I'm hearing, if someone does make a motion, they can add to it. That they challenge the city and county to look within themselves to see if they're doing what they think is best.
Is that something that you all have talked about, chief, the possibility of funding some of this?
We sure have.
We, we're challenged. Yeah, no, yeah.
There was a grant program that we were looking at, but the deadline hit. I think we, Dr. Zamora, and I think Mr. Rodriguez did the. And the school district could have applied for that as well, to provide for more officers.
I think we looked at that, or from what I gathered, the way we were set up and going to the SRO, that the city had to do. And somewhere between the security meeting that we had back then, and everything else, someone came up with the idea, or. Assume that we're gonna get in the ISD Police Department, I would never. Assume that we're going to get in the ISD Police Department, that was never, ever spoken about. So I don't understand where they got that from or whatever. And SRO was always the thing, and the way I, Mr. Madrid, how was that grant supposed to work? I know we met with Maria, Maria or what's her name, from Tony Gonzalez?
Uh, Mrs. Martinez.
Mrs. Martinez.
Yes.
But, and, and I'm not saying, wh- whatever, I, I, I appreciate you, but what I'm trying to say, that's gone.
Yes sir.
That's gone.
Yes sir.
But that's a whole thing, you know, that, that's a whole thing, we, we're, everybody's trying to. No, so, you know, verbalize it better than me, maybe like Mr. Hancer, you can verbalize what he says, but. You understand what I'm trying to say?
Yes sir.
We need to get this done and that's it, that's it. Do other entities have problems with employees? Yes, let's fix it, move on, everybody, and, and.
Claude, you said you had a, uh, an, an additional deal here for a recommendation, does that, you want to read it?
Uh, but what I said is that if a board member would like to move to request a specific number. Of school resource officers for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. And at the same time challenge the city and county to look to supplement, they're willing, you know, uh, just to put it on the record. You don't want them to do that, doesn't mean the city or the county has to do anything, but it's on the record.
Well, like you said, how, how many is enough? We've allotted five, we want five, but who's to say, is that enough? We don't know, but we can allot five, like there's always one, we've never had it, because we've never been able to get it. But what can the city, the county do to add to that, you don't have it, but more is better than five.
That's right.
Six is better than five, seven is better than five, but we want five.
We're not, there's no problem with that.
There's nothing wrong with, you know, saying, you know what, today we got three extra officers.
What do you want us?
You know, but like I said, that's, that's just, like I said. Like to challenge it.
Five?
Five, five, not five.
Is that a motion? Well, I, I think, I think that's a good, well, uh.
We have. I do want to mention that Bakers has ten. I, I do want to mention that Bakers has ten, ten SROs out there, um, you know. As far as how many is too many, I mean, you know, five is probably the minimum that we could take, but. You know, other school districts are taking it to extreme of having ten out there, I mean, raise the bar.
Hundred and eighty billion, no, a hundred and eighty million is the bond that they pass and they have fourteen billion in property values in Pickles. Um, so that, that, that has to come into consideration.
Well, I think that, say, if we start with a five and, and on the challenge here to the city and the county. If they can come up with funding some of these and we can afford to have more and we're willing to pay for five. You know, can, is that something that, that you guys can pursue as well? Does that make sense?
It doesn't mean they have to be assigned. But like I said, if, if you have. On a Wednesday, Thursday or Tuesday, you have three extra officers, say, you know what, go make ground. It's good to have more on the street, but it's a challenge, how many is too much or, or not enough for these kids and the teachers?
What about that?
I'd like to see one at every campus for sure, and then if you have extra, whatever, whatever we come up with, uh, with the resources that you all are able to come up. You know, I don't want to change speaker to the city.
Or, or back to them, but you know, I, I will say this, that I, we can provide five right now.
Okay. So, we have, uh, I guess the motion that needs to be made is to move to request five, uh, school resource officers for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Uh, challenging the city and the counties for resources to, to pay for them, is that correct?
This is not the five, this is the number that we are requesting from the city.
No, I've got, I've got the, the, the five, but challenging to pay for more?
No, 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 I mean, for, 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 what is going to fund them? And if, if they can come up with more and if, if they can pay for more and we want to pay the five, I mean, that, that's whatever we're going to be able to get.
It still hasn't paid for the five.
That's another discussion that they like. Well, they, they're challenging five. That's the challenge right there for the five, that means the, the. So, know your motion.
I moved to request five school resource officers for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Yeah. That's not, it's, it's on. Did you say that this is a challenge?
All right, so we have a motion, but we'll request five, uh, school resource officers for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year. I hear a second. Second by Nacho. Although you favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries, have a no, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, chief, thank you, and assistant chief, thank you.
Now, uh, we've got item J, developmental leave, BEC legal, which is Lindsay Killgoor.
Thank you, Mr. Spino, this is a. Um, a touchy subject and I'm going to try to provide the minimum information. I think that anybody who has paid attention to our staff and what is going on with one of the young children of, of, uh. A couple, because we do have the father and, and the mother who both work for the district and you can see her name here. Um, uh, they, they're going through a crisis with their daughter who is receiving treatment in Dallas. And, and, uh, this is, uh. Something that I've never really been in a position to use, but developmental leave is something that Forest Stockton ISD has and, and some other districts as well. And the purpose of this is, under exceptional circumstances, if someone is looking to better themselves or for whatever other reason. If they work for the district for a minimum of five years, which she has, the district is entitled to provide that employee. With up to one semester of full pay or up to one year of half pay. Um, this individual has exhausted all of her personal and sick leave, she has also exhausted all of the leave. That our sick pay can contribute to her as she's been in Dallas, helping her daughter fight. Uh, because of the circumstances and because of. Uh, I'm sure y'all know the Phil Fund me that was out there and with that little girl that's going to. Um, I had the discussion with, with Mr. Madrid and Mr. Alvarado, uh, I ran it by Ms. Maria. Think that in this case, uh, she submitted a resignation letter because if she had not, she would have started to lose her, uh. What it cost her to be a part of the district, right, because of the insurance, she would have had to start paying. And, and, uh, so immediately when she submitted that, I rejected it, I said, you're not accepted. And, uh, we said we wanted to try to do this for her. Uh, I know that I've only spoken to you, Mr. Spino, about this and, and I wanted to present it to the board. I guess I'll just say it, you know, the little girl's fighting cancer and, and she's one of our own. For those of you that know me and, and have listened to me. What I hear about are our students, our staff and our community, and people can say whatever they like to say. If you look at what my history is here and in the military, it's about taking care of our folks. And she is one of our folks, she is one of our family and because of that, and those are her questions, I want to recommend that we. Under these exceptional circumstances, place Miss Lindsay Killgoor on developmental leave. She's working with Mr. Alvarado to come up with a plan that will be appropriate and possibly even do some Zoom assignments with some of our kids. When it's possible, um. She expects that the treatment and everything goes well may end at the end of this semester and hopes to be back for this agenda work. Questions or comments?
Who would be better?
Mr. Alvarado, she said that she wanted the semester before we're to be so inclined, is that accurate?
That's correct.
The semester of full pay, mister.
And I'm sure you all have recommendations, place her performance and what have you and the need, I guess.
Her husband is our system analyst for agenda.
Any special questions? You're not?
I think it's great.
I'm going to approve the developmental leave as per BEC legal for Miss Lindsay Killgoor for the first semester of twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Motion by both, to approve developmental leave as per BEC legal for Miss Lindsay Killgoor for the first semester of the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Second.
Second by Andy. Although we favor, raise your right hand. Uh, next item on the agenda. Is, uh, uh, correction of prior board meetings, meetings. That's more.
Sir, we have an attachment to the, to these meetings, um, there are several individuals who contacted me, sent me audio, talked about what was going on on social media. And, uh, many of these things respond to Mr. Rivera and some of the things that Mr. Hancer mentioned earlier. Um, we have, from Ms. Beverly, uh, who takes our minutes and goes through. And also types them out before we review and finally approve, um, a sequence of events in the audio. Was previously requested and provided to the media for an article that was written and, uh. Some of the accusations that were made about Mr. Rivera voting and all that can clearly be clarified, uh, with the audio. Uh, on the video over here along with Mr. Rivera, we also have Ms. Heather Roman, who is an attorney with Iplom. They represent the district for different items, Iplom is a statewide, I don't know if y'all are a little interested, as well, Ms. Heather. Uh, but at the recommendation, um, of our school attorney. Um, we were asked to possibly play some of this for the audio to be unaccompanied by people in the public. And that the ability to amend and correct minutes could be possible, did a motion were made and approved. Can you elaborate on that, Ms. Heather?
Uh, yes sir, we, I don't know that you and I discussed necessarily audio, but I think it could be useful, um, to help clarify some things. Um, ultimately, there are mechanisms within the Robert's Rules of Order and within your own policies to address. When you have what are essentially ministerial typos, and then typos happen all the time, we. We transpose numbers, you know, we do all sorts of things when, um, because we're human, and so it's not necessarily unusual. For, um, a district to approve some minutes, um, because it's part of your consent agenda. And because often a month has elapsed, um, sometimes less, but it can be as long as a month. Between your last meeting and your, um, approval of the minutes, and so, um. Basically, there's a, the mechanism in which you can go back and say, okay, this is what really happened and we're going to make a change so that going forward. The minutes have been corrected and that these are now the corrected minutes that will stand in the file for all time. Um, and so the question I think that comes up in this circumstance, based on what I've, I've been apprised of, um, with regard to the concerns is. Is who was there and who was there when, and when were they there and were they there at all, specifically Mr. Rivera? And so, um, if that's something that can be cleared up through the recording, then that's fantastic. Um, I think that would be useful and then you're in a position, should the board choose to make a motion to clarify. And correct the minutes of the, I think it's the June meeting, um, as they apparently actually happened. And so I'm kind of anxious to hear the recording as well.
So, Mr. Omar has the sequence stuff. I'm going to read what Ms. Beverly has in her statement, which is available publicly. Um, the meeting was called to order at six oh five, Andy did not respond during roll call at twenty-three seconds in. Board, and you have this, right, Mr. Omar, I'll plug him here momentarily, board member Sandra, Rivera raised some concerns about Andy ownership at twelve forty-six. Board President Billy Spino comments, and Andy will be here in a minute and he will verify that idea, two fifty fifteen. Board votes to approve the resolution authorizing the new superintendent to negotiate the contract for purchase of property after the vote. Billy indicate motion carries five oh, Fertie Martinez was also absent at fifteen thirty-four. And then board votes to approve the unimproved property contract for the purchase of property as presented after the vote, Billy indicates motion carries five oh. Uh, the next agenda item, which I'll skip ahead briefly to, is specifically to address. Any of the questions that may have been put forth, but moving forward, Mr. Omar, I can do it.
Do I remember the next to twelve forty-six? Twelve forty-six, is it? Do you have a question? Questions?
Can you share on that property, um, I was told that. Uh, property itself was sold to someone else. And, uh. To someone else who, uh, uh, come off, was lost. No, was that required or not?
So, I understand, I had a meeting with Mr. Randall today. And what we discovered in our conversations is that in the contract that's previously presented, there was an error. And we discussed the matter, the last had been corrected to represent the last fifteen to eighteen. Uh, because that is supposed to be purchased and then we have a commitment. City that the possibility exists for a conditional lot, it has to be devoted to the district, you know, and that'll be nineteen. So, lot twenty is the one that is previously been sold to somebody else.
Yes, that. What, twenty?
Fifteen fifteen?
Board, uh, I think, and Andy will be here, then still verify that idea, so, uh.
Fifteen thirty-four?
Seven, comments? Do you not know your role? Move to the resolution of the official superintendent. The legally contract for the purchase of the property. Letting more than nine hundred who resist help write in the issue for that, to negotiate a number of the first part, let her say. Say, say in that blow, but it's better, although you favor, raise your right hand. Move up, motion carries, I hope. I don't, you did that, it's a serial police, I need to talk to the contractor.
Thank you. Um, five oh, five oh, both times, so I know that Mr. Spino believed that Mr. Rivera might show up. But because he didn't, it was five oh, five oh, both times. That's where we're at, and again, the next motion or the next agenda will deal with any other questions.
For what it's worth, I keep track of, of, I, I don't know if you guys have been noticing, I'm, I'm right in here, like, go home. But on our package, I tried to list, uh, when we do roll call, who shows up, who's late, whatever. And Andy never showed up to the meeting, and, and I did document that now. At the last meeting, I believe he showed up and, and I did say, let the record show, but this was this last meeting that we had, I mean. So, uh, and I think that by voting, uh, our record here, like the night, which we've included Andy through Zoom. Uh, that kind of gives you an idea of what's happened and, I, I don't know, uh. We're not trying to play the blame game or anything, but things happen sometimes. It, it, it wasn't an intentional thing and, uh, I guess we need to look at, at other things as well, but. Uh, Heather, I'm going to ask you, uh, how do you see things, you're an attorney.